Thank you, and good morning to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. I acknowledge that we have in attendance the Deputy Chair being councillor Paul Tully, we have Mayor Theresa Harding, councillor Jim Madden, we have observing councillors Augustine and Doyle, I believe they're our only observers, and I understand that we have a request, an apology from Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnic, who would also like to request a leave of absence. I move that we grant a leave of absence for this meeting for Deputy Mayor Nicole Johnic, seconded councillor Madden, all those in favour, against, that's carried. Okay, Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as the custodians of the lands, winds and waters we all share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of proud people. Is there any declarations of interest that anyone's aware of for the agenda today? There being no declarations of interest, I'll move to business outstanding, item one on the agenda, the response to notice of motion. I'll ask, is there any questions of the officer before I seek some, the officer to speak to it? Is there any need for the officer to speak to it if anyone's got anything in relation? I do have a bit of an issue with the, there being three recommendations, I think it can be reduced down to two quite effectively, but I might need your skills in drafting that councillor Tully. But is there any desire for a discussion on the matter?
Once it's moved and seconded, yes Chair.
Okay, well I'll, did you feel any need to discuss anything in relation to this one?
Not specifically Chair, unless you've got any particular questions you'd like to discuss.
Yeah, not specifically, I think there's been an awful lot of investigation gone into this, probably to the ad nauseam in many respects. I see in the report that there's well over a dozen councils that appear to have been consulted as to their position on it, so, and it appears to be quite uniform. So if there being no questions, I just believe that the recommendations can be moved, modified to just reflect the fact that the policy remain unchanged. That the contents be noted, recommendation A, but I don't know whether there's actually a need for recommendation B.
Can I just sort of say that reading B and C gives an explanation to the community of that we're maintaining our current policy and not departing from it, otherwise you'd need to go into the report in detail. My slight preference would be to keep that there because even when I read that to start with, without then reading the full report, it put it in to me in total context, and I think B and C do that for the wider community.
Okay, well if we're all, yeah, okay, moved by councillor Madden that the recommendations A, B and C as they are. The, do I have a seconder? Obviously councillor Tully. Any, now that we have a seconder, any discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding.
If I may Chair, this was actually brought forward by two people that are out here, so councillor Madsen and councillor Ireland, in the previous term. They had residents, a resident come to them with this request, and so they did this as part of their, representing their community and putting it forward. So just I'd like to say that I think for most of us, pets are an important part of our family life, and it's completely understandable when people wish to, you know, remember them. So I'll be supporting this report, and I just sort of like to remind people that there are a number of Ipswich businesses that do a wonderful job in helping people remember their pets, such as Pets R I P, Pets in Peace and Hague Pet, Family Pet Funerals. They currently operate and offer memorial services, a number of products for people who want to memorise their very beloved pets. Thank you Chair.
Any other discussion around? Yes councillor Madden?
Chair, I can understand why this would be suggested, but having read the report, I appreciate why council shouldn't change its policy. But I thank the submitters who sought this change. With all council policies, it's important that we review them from time to time, and it's good to see that the review came by way of a submission by one of the residents.
Yeah, I'd like to recognise the councillors who actually moved this forward, councillors Madsen and at the time councillor Ireland from the previous term. I think that it just shows that councillors do represent their community and put these things forward. As a person who lost a pet only a couple of years ago, I can fully appreciate people being, you know, obviously pets are, as we like to say, a part of the family. And I also recognise the work that's been put in by the officers in investigating this matter. And I also know the stress of losing a pet, having had my, our new pet escape his yard on Friday, and having to spend the next forty-five, fifty minutes trying to locate him. So, and I actually thank the driver who actually pulled up and grabbed him before he ended up underneath the vehicle. So I do, I do understand our love of pets, but I think that the policy should remain as is. If there's no further discussion, I put to the vote, all those in favour, against, that's carried. Oh yes, I forgot about councillor Cullen, and I didn't recognise you before councillor Cullen as being in attendance, so we'll note the record accordingly. Is there anything you wish to, was there anything you wish to add before the vote?
No, Chair, I'm all, I'm all for keeping the policy as it is.
Okay, so that's, that's in favour with the recommendations?
I do understand.
Yes, and I do understand the hurt that you go through as a family when you lose a pet, so I do recognise that. Much loved. That's unanimous. Item two, and I believe both the general managers are involved in this matter, would you like to speak to it? I'll start with you Matthew, maybe.
I need to note Chair that obviously this is a report in response to the notice of motion submitted by councillor Madsen at the last council ordinary meeting on the twenty-fifth of July. He requested that a report be submitted to the next Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee regarding the proposal to deliver the Greenwood Village Road, Red Bank Plains Road intersection upgrade as its own project, ahead of Red Bank Plains Road Stage Four, which is currently intended to include those works. The recommendations of the report are, A, that council note the contents of the report, B, that council proceed with the planning, design and construction of the ultimate works for Red Bank Plains Road Stage Four in accordance with the current planned timelines, and C, that council note the movement restriction works will likely be undertaken by development activity in the area.
Did you wish to add at all?
Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services, thank you Chair, only to say that there are a number of intersections along this road and others where, as development occurs, we'll need to make strategic decisions about timing of their upgrade versus movement restrictions to make things safe, as is this case.
Just going around the room, is there any questions? And I'm happy to open this up to observers as well. We do have observing online via Teams, councillor Madsen, who was the councillor who put forward the motion, the initial motion. Yes, I'll go to Mayor Harding first.
Thank you. May I ask, with the original development application in 2016, did this come to council for a decision, or was it a decision delegated to council officers?
Through the chair, this decision was made by councillor, council officers at the time.
Okay. I just note in there, they talked about council's ten-year long-term financial forecast that had this in it. When did it be removed, and when did it seem to be, it seemed to be a reduction of not being so much trunk infrastructure, it didn't seem to be as important, and therefore removed from the LTFF?
I don't, I'm not able to provide specific dates, but obviously over time, as we've refined our ten-year, our three-year and our one-year capital, certain projects have had to be extended out. So in this case, at the time of that original development approval, we obviously had some choices. The choice was to either seek that the developer undertake a major intersection upgrade in isolation, which the size and scale of that was probably not, well definitely not viable. The second choice was to do nothing and let the intersection go and potentially create a safety issue at some point in time, to do interim work, which would be obviously something that's wasteful, potentially replaced at another point in time, or for some works to improve safety at a particular time. And at that time, it is my understanding that it was marginal in terms of the volume of traffic that was projected and forecast through that intersection. The more recent development activity and traffic growth in the area has resulted in a situation where that's no longer tenable, it's not appropriate to continue the growth with an all-movements intersection at Greenwood Village. So we're left with a choice of interim upgrade or some other form of upgrade, noting the timing in the Capital Works Programme.
Still through the chair, on page sixteen, I'm looking at still the 2016 development application, the third paragraph, just that first sentence says, "The detailed design completed by the developer determined that the condition works to signalise intersection were not feasible due to the extent of scope of works required to meet design standards and potentially integrate with an ultimate configuration and the inability to secure additional land to accommodate this footprint." Do you want to explain that to me? Because obviously we go to, I think, attachment three, it goes to obviously the land to the south. Is that, is that the land that you're discussing, or what does that mean in layman's terms?
Yeah, through the chair, in a simple terms, to make the intersection, or to upgrade the intersection as you would need, you can't just do an intersection upgrade where it currently sits. So there are changes to the horizontal and the vertical elements, so essentially dropping the intersection, so earthworks, and moving the intersection further south. That includes additional land requirements, that land is not within the control of the developer.
Are they able to acquire it?
Of course, anyone can go and seek to acquire land, but if we were to condition someone to acquire land that they don't control, that would be a fatal condition, which would be inconsistent with the planning act.
Okay, thank you. Just so I understand this correctly, if council was to say, yep, we're going to prioritise this, it's an eight to ten million dollar decision, and it's something that's probably going to get ripped up in a few years, is that, unless we resequence things. Well, I'm trying to get, I guess, trying to get in a nutshell what we're grappling with.
Through you Chair, yes that is correct. The eight to ten million dollars was, is anticipated, given the cost escalation since the passage of time from the initial design option. So in short, yes.
Okay.
Just to clarify again, so on the question, so the eight to ten million is the works that's being currently done, or is that the, that's a improvement on what's currently being proposed as part of the works?
No Chair, this would be if we intended to conduct interim works before we did the ultimate solution. So if we were to implement an upgrade, which would be in place until we did the full Stage Four project, it would be sacrificial work of a cost between eight to ten million dollars.
And may I, ma'am? And what is the cost of the ultimate again?
At this stage, we don't have the detailed cost for the ultimate solution, we have a concept design for the ultimate solution only, so we don't have the detailed design costs.
But it might, pardon me, it might be in the order of...
I'll have to, I'll have to refer to my team here councillor, but it would be a number of orders significantly higher. Can I just ask Brad perhaps to comment on the ultimate cost? So councillor, just for those online, that was a cost of twenty-five to thirty million dollars.
Thank you.
If we get through the chair, if I may?
Continue, yes please ma'am.
Thank you Chair. Page eighteen, look at the 2018 development application. It talks about the development that's not in the Greenwood Village Road, but it's at two hundred sixty-seven residential lots at six three nine Red Bank Plains Road, north-east there. It talks about subsequent operational works applications have been approved for the initial stages of this development, with an interim signalised intersection to be constructed on Red Bank Plains Road, approximately five hundred and fifty metres east of Greenwood Village Road to provide the primary site access. So how would that work? Is that, is definitely going to happen soon, or was it just the approvals occurred, or how could that somehow assist residents here, rather than driving them through School Road and Hellits Row?
Through the chair, I don't believe that will assist residents in any way, because it'll provide access from a block of land to the north of Red Bank Plains Road as opposed to south. There is no guarantee with any development activity, you know, work with the development industry in the hopes that they proceed to deliver, but they don't always, there's other factors at play.
Thank you Chair.
I might afford the mover of the initial motion at the council meeting, an opportunity to ask questions. Councillor Madsen, are you, do you have questions?
Thank you Chair, I just wanted to know what guarantees do the residents of Red Bank Plains have that council will stick to current timeline projections for the whole Red Bank Plains Road force upgrade?
I think that would be up to us as council when we put the budget to it, if I can jump in Chair.
It's an interesting question though, is there any, do you as the general manager have any response to that?
Through you Chair, I think actually the mayor's comments are absolutely right, that really is a matter for council.
Any further questions councillor Madsen?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I wasn't being facetious, but the point is that this project's likely to be delayed and delayed and delayed. That's the track record for infrastructure in south-east Queensland at the moment. So rather than people saying, oh, that's up to us to decide, the intersection is already being said to be failing and not accommodating the traffic flows safely. So yeah, there's a bit more to it than that, isn't there?
Through you Chair. Councillor, I think, as you'd be more than aware, we have many similar circumstances across the city where we have intersections which are being challenged by increased traffic flows. In terms of my comment about it being a matter for council, I think obviously as we sit down to assess priorities for infrastructure, this particular project will have to be afforded priority, but that really will be something that occurs in discussion with council.
Yeah, just, I'll also ask councillor Augustine, as the fellow divisional councillor there, if she has any questions?
Oh, thanks, thank you Chair. Just like my fellow councillor Madsen, I do have grave concerns about this intersection. It is quite, quite a dangerous intersection, and one of the proposed designs, yeah, I just don't, I just don't get the design if we were to do an interim one as well.
So just a point of order Chair, we haven't moved in seconded these motions yet to go into discussion?
No, I was just, so if we can try and keep them to questions councillor Augustine, I understand.
Yeah, yeah, I was just same like councillor Madsen, it's like, when would, when would it be put on the timeline to be done?
Well, I think that question has been answered, but I do have a question, and this seems to be for mine, and I appreciate that we, as a council, and we're not unique in this area, other councils have the same problems, intersections that problematic, dare I say unsafe at times, but the proposal we've got at the moment seems to be to actually have the intersection operating in a completely different method to the way it used to operate, such that there is some movement that's now being excluded, if I'm correct in assuming, from what I'm reading. And for mine, that's going to have impacts elsewhere. So specifically with respect to, I believe, some of the schools in Red Bank Plains, or Red Bank Plains School Road and the like. So what are we doing to mitigate what is going to be a chronic problem, I think, in that, in further within that suburb? It's going to exacerbate, is what I'm saying. So what are we doing about that?
Through the chair, I might offer some reflections on that and councillor Augustine's query. The, the challenge with a lot of these locations is that we are obviously a growing city, and we'll have intersections across the city that will be pressured from development activity and just natural traffic growth. With each of those intersections, generally speaking, we will have an idea of what the future holds for that intersection. So in some cases, the intersection can stay pretty much in its same formation, and it will have the capacity to accommodate growth. There might be changes to that formation to accommodate growth, that might be restricted movement and those sorts of things. It might go from a four-way intersection to a three-way intersection, there might be changes in the way that that works. Now, in some locations like this, we've got an intersection where ultimately it's supposed to be an all-movements T-intersection, that's our ultimate plan, but there are challenges in getting to achieve that. Now, the core challenge, leading to councillor Augustine's question, is why is it so complex to create an interim solution here? And that is a combination of the scale, the complexity and the nature of that location. So if you're familiar with Greenwood Village Road, it's on a crest, visibility is poor. In the last sort of ten years, the traffic growth has been substantial on Red Bank Plains Road. It's now in a situation where you've got to consider safety. And so when we are looking at this, and I'm not a transport engineer or a transport planner, but we need to consider the reasonable and relevance of conditions we're opposing, we need to consider what our ultimate plans are for the road network, and we need to then consider safety and convenience. Safety being the foremost and convenience being secondary. Now, if a decision like this does have an effect on other parts of the road network, that's not necessarily on the developer to sort out, that's something for us to monitor and manage. And with such a growing city, one of our biggest challenges will be infrastructure and managing this scenario where we'll have interim treatments versus ultimate treatments. Now, we will have more complex scenarios where you might have this intersection that ultimately will only move to, say, a left out. That's a different challenge altogether. And this is one thing that we need to be very clever with when we're considering our development assessment, and ultimately what our strategic infrastructure planning is, so that we actually have a plan of what the interim solution is and the ultimate solution is. And unfortunately, interim solutions may create inconveniences, but that's only a problem if that inconvenience then later on or down the track creates a safety concern.
I guess my concern is that we seem to be putting the development priority, driving the infrastructure rather than the safety need and the traffic movement as a priority. And having, having been in that situation, and obviously the divisional councillors can speak for it themselves, I just see that as, yeah, I mean, I guess my great concern, and I'll frame this as a question, why is it that it's actually taken to this point that the divisional councillors and this councillor are now being made aware of the situation there at this intersection, when ultimately it should have been something that came up much earlier? Through the chair. There seems to have been a weakness, I believe, in the system somewhere, that didn't come to this situation now, long ago. And pardon me, I'm a bit hoarse at the moment, I don't know why. Yeah councillor Cullen, you have a question?
Yeah, through the chair. Brett, is the, is the designs ready to go for the Stage Four at Red Bank Plains? And then I was just going to ask, why can't they just start at the other end first? Is there an issue there? Just forgive my ignorance.
Through the chair. So councillor Cullen, when you say start at the other end, do you mean start at the other end of Red Bank Plains Road, or for this development, starting at the other end of Greenwood?
Yeah, well, for that Stage Four, I'm assuming it's probably starting up, up near the other end, near the shop somewhere. Why couldn't we start it at the, at the other end and, and work the other way? Is, I mean, I'm not an engineer mate, but you know what I mean? Like, if we've got the designs already done, why couldn't we just flip it over and start at the other end first?
Through you Chair. Councillor, it's Matt Anderson, I think, just in response to that, we have a concept design, but we don't have the detailed design at this stage. So that in itself means we haven't been able to plan a construction timeline around Stage Four. Obviously, we're working through Stage Three currently, once that's complete, then there'll be more detailed planning. At this stage, we have funds allocated in financial year twenty-six, twenty-seven to conduct the detailed design plans for Stage Four.
And, and we couldn't start Stage Four from the other end?
I wouldn't like to.
If we know that, if, if we kind of, and again, just mate, I'm a truck driver, right? So I'm a bit steady. Just can we not flip it around and start at the other end and then join at the other, and start where the problem is, kind of thing? I mean, the whole, the whole road's a problem, but.
Fundamentally, once we've got the design in place, we'll be able to ascertain the appropriate way to conduct construction, but that's really not something we can do at this point.
Yeah, okay. No, no, that's cool. Thank you.
Look, is there any further questions around the table? Yes, Mayor Harding.
Chair, what are the conditions, and I might have to take this as a question on notice, this is a very busy road, and if you look at some of our other state-controlled roads across our city, many of them have less traffic than Red Bank Plains Roads. Is there a process for us as a council to, for this to apply, for this to become a state-controlled road?
May I might ask Tony DiLio to come up and perhaps make some comment on that one? May I might ask Tony Delio to come up and perhaps make some comment on that one?
Again, happy to take as a question on notice.
Yeah, we, we may need to, but... Thank you, Mr. Delio. Tony Delio, manager of infrastructure strategy. So the question again, sorry?
Yes, would you like to ask it again, Mayor Harding?
Thank you, Chair. Noting how busy Red Bank Plains Road is and we see the other state-controlled roads in our city that aren't as busy that are state-controlled roads, what is the process for us to apply for this road to become a state-controlled road? Is it eligible or, I don't, I don't know the process?
Mayor, there would be a process that is followed for roads to either be mained or demained. Red Bank Plains Road actually was a state-controlled road many years ago and it was handed, through that process, was handed to council to become a council-controlled road. That was at the time when the Centenary Highway was extended through to Springfield. So as part of that process, the, the state built Centenary Highway, took possession of that as a state-controlled road and through negotiation, Red Bank Plains Road was handed back to council. So I guess anything is possible, but there are processes that can be followed for roads to be either mained and/or demained.
Thank you, Chair.
Can I just follow up?
Yeah, sorry, councillor Tom.
More a supplementary sort of question about that issue. That was at a time when the Centenary Highway, the upgrade, the four-laning from the Lovren Motorway into Ipswich, and you might just confirm this, into Springfield and beyond. The, the cost of that to the council as a council road was going to far exceed the demaning of Queen Street and Red Bank Plains Road. So that was one of the decisions made at the time, that financially we would have been better off. So...
Until his point.
I think you were with the council at that time.
It may have been when I just started with council, but that, I believe that to be the case, councillor Tully, yes. The most recent example of maning and demaning was the upgrade of the Ipswich Motorway, where several service roads were, became council-controlled roads and River Road and River Road became state-controlled roads.
Any further questions of, of Mr. Delio? Councillor Augustine has a question.
Thank you, Chair. Through the Chair. What would be the process of putting a, a no right turn? Do you know, most of you know, you know, down at Milton, it's a very busy road. It's nearly the opposite of the McDonald's at Sun Corp Stadium. There's an interim sign that says you can't turn right in a certain period of, of the day. Now, that's a really busy road and people adhere to those, that traffic condition. That would seem like an easier, less, you know, something that we could look to, to do in the interim. I'm, I'm just seeing that in Milton, very busy in Brisbane, this sign and it works there. Yeah, what's the thoughts?
I, I'm familiar with the intersection in Milton, sorry, through the Chair. I would expect that the circumstances at play in Milton are probably quite different to the circumstances at play in this scenario, principally the safety concerns with visibility. This is the, the core issue here is, you know, in practical terms, when someone approaches the intersection from Greenwood Village Road and they're choosing to turn left or right, it's the ability of a motorist to be able to see oncoming traffic and pick a gap in that oncoming traffic. I don't think adjusting that will, will help. The, the scenario in Milton is obviously a peak hour consideration based upon the volume of traffic rather than visibility. The, the other consideration here is we've got set development conditions with the developer to undertake those works. So the, the movement restriction works as well as requiring them to undertake notification and some engagement with the community about the changes that happens. It's, of course, within the ability of the council to review any intersection, regardless of what works have been undertaken by the developer, to then undertake further changes if required into the future.
Any further questions, councillor Augustine? Before, is there any further questions around the table or online? Before we get to that point and before we look to the motion, I've got to say that I just feel quite uncomfortable about the recommendations in general, considering that my philosophy is always that you don't create a solution by creating a problem elsewhere. And I think that these, whilst we're going to...
A point of order, Chair.
Yeah, and I recognise the point of order.
We can't get into discussion, I can't, yeah, we can't go into discussion until it's moved and seconded.
Well, my, well, I'd like to move that we take this back off the agenda as there's obviously further discussion and further investigation required. So I'm looking around the table for, and I guess this is the first time we've had, I've had the op, well, not the opportunity, but the first time that I've had a report that I feel it needs to go back for further investigation. I think that whilst the, and I do commend, I do commend the, both departments for putting this together at such short notice, considering it was a notice of motion.
May I suggest that we could move in second in principle so we can have a discussion? And I guess we could amend it on the floor, Chair, would that be okay? I'd be happy to, to do that.
Okay, very good. Would you like to move that?
I'll, I'll move that.
Mayor Harding, do we have a seconder? Councillor Tully?
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion.
Happy for you to continue, just...
All right, well, I guess, well, as the mover, do you want to say something first?
I guess to, to me, I saw this, and just going through some of the history here, that obviously did come to council, I think, just prior to the 2020 election, the administrator obviously had a report. I guess, rather than apportioning blame, because at, at the end of the day, it's up to the council's to apportion budget to it. So it's a, it's a well-known intersection, it's a busy road, we were doing a lot of work on the, on the roads there, just like we have been with the Springfield Great, Green Bank Arterial, the Springfield Parkway, we're spending $60 million there. We have a lot of roads that need work, where it's Jones Road, you know, Ripley Road and so on. I guess, to me, I saw this as a, as a note and I guess we're going to be starting budget discussions, I guess, in October, November, for us to discuss that and what grants we could apply for and things like that. So I, I don't, to me, the, the stumbling block is the money, is, is my understanding, Chair. I guess I open up for, for discussion to see, is that the, and that is a decision for us as, as councillors. If we're going to support the 30 or 40 million for this, what are we taking off our capital works budget elsewhere? I guess is the discussion, which is, would probably happen in, in a budget context. So I was sort of happy with recommendations A and B, happy to discuss others, but yeah, that's where I was at, Chair. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Tully, sorry?
Yeah, thank you. There's two issues here, obviously, A and B in relation to the future upgrading of this intersection or nearby and I'm supportive of that. The current timelines are based on financial issues and that can change. And I've got no issue with, with A and B as they're, as they're printed. It's with paragraph C. And the concern is that, you know, under current delegations, no right-hand turn signs could be placed at the corner of Greenwood Village Road and Red Bank Plains Road without consultation with councillors. There is no delegation process involving councillors at the moment. I propose, and that, that is the issue in the short term. Like, if, if no right-hand turn signs are erected, it would mean that residents in that node around Greenwood Village would have to travel past two schools over a long distance and I think that is a real issue. What councillor Augustine has raised, I do notice at that intersection, of course, on Milton Road, you have two or three cars, every time I go there, I'll sit there for half an hour before they realise that there's a flashing sign to the right. I think it's three o'clock or 3.30 or seven o'clock or so, but perhaps that needs a, yeah, a more significant signage. I, I've proposed an amendment which I've sent to the committee clerk and that is to replace paragraph C with the following. Recognising there are two issues here, one is the timely upgrade of Red Bank Plains Road to take account of the horizontal and vertical geometry of the road at or near that intersection and to delete paragraph C, this is the amendment, is to delete paragraph C and to insert that a further report be prepared to examine all alternatives to full prohibition of right-hand turns at the corner of Greenwood Village Road and Red Bank Plains Road. If there is a seconder, I'll speak to that, Chair.
As, as, as the mover, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, there's a seconder. And if I, if I could just raise, raise, raise the issue, it's to look at, and I use the word full prohibition, that is, that could, could look at the timing of it, whether it's 24 hours a day, what other alternatives there are, a lower speed limit, which is not conducive to a road that needs to be upgraded, but might give us time to examine the financial issues in relation to the upgrade of Red Bank Plains Road and the timing of that. That would be consistent with paragraphs A and B, that we, you know, continue to the design and, or the planning, design and construction in accordance with current timelines, which is what officers are expected to do, yeah, based on current financial criteria and existing council decisions. But paragraph C gives us the option to examine all other alternatives in relation specifically to the upgraded intersection and the movement, so that we, we do make an informed decision with the pros and cons of erecting or not erecting no right-hand turn signs.
Thanks, councillor Tully. I'm not sure of the protocols with respect to allowing observers to enter the discussion at this point once something is moved, but if with the concurrence of all those present, I'm happy to open it up.
It's up to you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Augustine?
Oh, thank you, Chair. I concur with what councillor Tully has said, but I'd also like to see if we could put after B to, subject to keeping councillors updated on the progress and planning of this project and if budgetary opportunities arise, consider this project to be brought forward.
Do, is that proposing the additional words on paragraph B?
Yes, subject to.
Oh, Chair, I'll be supportive of that as a mover, thank you.
I'm supportive of that.
Could you?
Say it again?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So B is subject to keeping councillors, oh, where am I up to? Councillors updated on the progress of planning and this project, of this, yeah, and if budgetary opportunities arise, consider this project to be brought forward.
Would you like that to be all councillors?
Yes.
It's probably a good idea, as it does have implications across a number of divisions.
Yes.
And I was going to suggest whether there should be an inclusion in there in the, perhaps even in recommendation C about a study into what the impacts would be into the, the remainder of that community as a result of the existing proposed works at that intersection. I think we need to understand that as well.
Can I say as the mover of the amendment, which has been accepted as part of the motion now by the mover and seconder of the amendment, or by the original motion, that raises a secondary issue, that this is specifically in relation to, I think if we are going to do that, it should have a paragraph D.
It's paragraph D.
There might be a bit of a, a changeover in relation to that, but I think we need to keep that entirely separate, you know, like...
Fair enough.
Couple of right-hand turn signs are quite different from that wider consultation and consideration.
So, sorry, I was...
Sorry, Chair, just with the, just before, after opportunity in B where we updated, just can we put in, consider this project, so after arise, arise, comma, consider this project to be brought forward. Thank you. Sorry, that's it. Thank you.
Mover and seconder, happy with that?
Yes, Chair.
Agreed.
And I, as has been suggested, I'd like to recommend a, the inclusion of a D that a traffic study be undertaken into the impacts of the proposed, the existing proposed works at the Greenwood Village Road, Red Bank Plains Road intersection.
Chair, may I just ask the CEO a question about, or the GM about the cost of that? Because that'll be an additional, additional work, so I'm not sure how much that would cost.
Through you, Chair, I'll have to take that on notice, Mayor, to give you a, to give you a decent estimate.
Okay.
I'm sure that can be done in-house, can it not?
I would trust my team to be able to put that order of cost together, yes.
I, I guess I just want to look at, if they're doing that, what aren't they doing? So I guess I'm just looking at what are we kicking off the schedule? So I guess I'm, I guess I'm asking advice from the organisation if they can fulfil that. Will there be a budget impact or will another piece of work be bumped off the list?
I think we need to be confident in what's going to happen too. And many of us, many of the councillors probably are fairly familiar there that what may happen or is likely to happen. But I think we also need to have some expert advice as to what's likely to happen as a result of it.
I'm not down the advice, Chair, but if I could ask the, the CEO or the GM about how much that would cost or if we're doing it in-house, what's being bumped off. I just want to have a bit of understanding. We just can't say to the organisation, do this and, and that give you no money or resources.
Through you, Chair, absolutely, Mayor. We'll, we'll put together a cost estimate. As you indicate, there will be material effort put into understanding this, modelling, et cetera, to understand really the broader impact around the network. So it, it is not a small undertaking, it will take a degree of effort.
Through you, Chair, Mr. Anderson, is that something that we would undertake in-house? Or are you saying that we would outsource that and the first step will be to get an estimate of costs of that traffic study?
Through you, Chair. CEO, we will have some, some capacity to oversee that work in-house. It will depend upon our current level of commitments. We'll have to make an assessment around whether we do externally deliver that work.
So we can report back to you, Chair, on the cost estimate for the traffic study?
Yeah, what, bring it for, bring it back to council?
If I could just, Chair, I guess I'd, I'd be asking the organisation, because I don't want to hold it up or delay things. But if, if the CEO could come back to us, if, you know, to let us know and if it's not workable, if it needs a budget, a budget amendment or something like that, I would expect the organisation to come back to us to, to let us know. Is that reasonable, Chair?
I think it's, I do think it's imperative that we undertake it.
I have no, and I guess the other question is, would normally the developer be doing that traffic study rather than council? So I guess I'm trying to sort of, not try to take on an obligation that really a developer should be doing as well.
I guess the thing here is that this is our works that we're undertaking. These aren't brought about as a direct result of the developments, because the developments are proposed developments. So they're, they're what's bringing forward the ultimate solution. We're putting in place a temporary solution and in many respects, we, this is going to have an impact on the surrounding suburbs. Happy to be corrected.
Through the Chair, the interim works are actually a proposal for a development to occur. So that's the interim movement restriction. The ultimate works are our works, as in council capital works, to be undertaken. So there are, the, the core decisions today, I suppose, are to understand that there are developer works that are progressing and they are progressing to occur. The, the decision and the crux of this conversation in the report is whether or not we consider bringing forward the Red Bank Plains Road stage four in its entirety or in part and there are obviously cost implications associated with doing that.
Well, so the, so what are we suggesting in relation to my suggested recommendation? Do we put it in there or we don't put it in there?
I guess, look at the, the, I just, to me, we don't know the cost. We're tasked with the organisation to do something that is potentially costing quite a bit. So I guess we either go forward with it, say we do it, or, or note that it's going to, the organisation, as it comes back to us.
Chair, if I may, Chair, sorry, there's quite a simple solution here. Again, we have 10 days, the next council meeting. It's potentially, we can get an order of cost estimate before then, when the council ultimately will accept the recommendations of the committee.
Well, yeah, I, I think that's the appropriate way to go. I guess for mine, I believe the, the cost here is, is not necessarily the cost to council. It's a, there's a cost to community that we could be facing here in relation to these, the proposed movements of this intersection. It's going to be pushing more traffic past schools. There's going to be a safety cost potentially in relation to this as well. And that's been raised by the divisional councillors as well.
I don't think that's in question, Chair, if I could say that. I think that's the reason why we're looking at it. The whole, to me, it's the entire reason why this has come forward is because of the... The whole, to me, it's the entire reason why this has come forward is because of the increased traffic along Halletts Road, School Road and what their longer term plans are, so I don't think that is in question. I'm just questioning, you know, the, the costs of the additional work that we're giving council. We just need to be sure that we follow good governance principles and we make those decisions, know the, the cost, um, and, and what, if we're doing additional work, what's being bumped out.
Yeah, there's, look, you know, we can, we can, um, drill down to where, how we got to this point at a later time, but, um, certainly I think that there should have perhaps been some greater communication internally, uh, before it got to this point. That's for certain, and maybe that's something we need to look at, um, going forward.
Councillors, every obligation to bring these things up during budget discussions, Chair.
Um, so, um, look, so I'm suggesting the inclusion of that recommendation be that a traffic study be undertaken uh, into the traffic impact, the surrounding traffic impacts, um, caused by that likely or some. Can someone give me the appropriate wording in relation to, um, um?
Chair, if I may, assist?
Yes.
Yep, so potentially start D with, um, subject to a cost estimate from council officers, consider if a traffic, um, study be undertaken. Consider if it is necessary to undertake a traffic study in relation to surrounding impacts. It's very clunky, subject to, consider if it is necessary.
Chair, may I just seek some clarification quickly? Um, in terms of the traffic study, are you conducting, are you intending us to conduct an assessment around the proposed no right turn?
The, yes, the existing, the proposed.
So not the proposed interim solution?
Not the proposed.
So, so we've, we've talked through three different options, the right turn, which the developer is currently considering, the, uh, potential interim works, which would be the eight to ten million dollars, and the relocation of the, of the, uh, intersection itself, uh, and ultimate, the ultimate.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the existing proposed works as part of the Red Bank Plains.
Thank you.
Um, roadworks.
If I may through the Chair.
Yeah, it's getting, it's getting clumsy.
It's complex, isn't it? So the, uh, just to Mr Davy, um, and noting that when councillor Madsen raised this, with councillor Augustine, the sense of urgency, so are you sug- what, what's the timeframe we have with the developer conducting these works that have been approved? What's, how long have we got before? Do you know what I'm trying to ask?
Yes, um, through the Chair, um, CEO, we do have a time limit on assessing a application for the design of the intersection. The development's already been approved with the intersection treatment that's planned, uh, required. So in order for them to com- to complete the development, they need to do the works. The bit of information I don't know is what their timeframe in is on actually completing the works. But, uh, regardless of the outcome of today's discussion and the resolutions, there will be a decision point in weeks for us to decide the design, and then it'll be up to the developer on how quickly they mobilise to construct. So theoretically, that could be within months that construction occurs.
Chair, I'll offer another alternative, um, rather than having, um, recommendation D, we could leave that off noting that we, it could come forward to the ordinary council meeting next Thursday. If you're not quite happy with that wording, but that sounds up to you.
Well, I actually just written a, um, proposed wording here while we, we were in discussion. Uh, if, if those are in favour, that a cost estimate be undertaken prior to council's ordinary meeting, considering a traffic study into impacts on local traffic networks as a result of pending intersection works at Red Bank Plains Road and Greenwood Village Road.
Just a point of order with that, the, um, that recommendation doesn't come into effect until council's decided it, so, so, um, the co- uh, officers.
Okay, understood, yeah.
I, I, I agree with what, what the mayor is suggesting, that let's see how this evolves over the next week, and then we're in a position to add a paragraph D if, if necessary at the council.
So we can get some, uh, so you're happy to undertake some cost estimates into that? Well, that's, I'll keep that wording, uh, and with just the removal of the, the, um, um, council ordinary meeting until next week, if, uh, we're able to get a good, sound cost indication.
And Chair, just before, um, we look at voting, I just, if, if we may, maybe just double check with the Division One councils, that they're okay with those recommendations?
Yes, I'd.
Is that second, Chair?
Uh, we're removing D at this stage? Yes, thank you.
Are you, I'm just checking if Jacob's okay. Chair, I'm just sort of.
Yes, yes, just some feedback from the Division One councillors. Um, you're satisfied with those recommendations going forward to the council ordinary meeting?
Yeah, I believe something like D may be worth adding on in two weeks or ten days. Um, but, um, this is a general comment, many times in the last four years, we've just saw some simple extra information in the timeframe between a committee meeting and a council meeting, and usually that's sufficient to get something like an order of cost estimate, so that's how I would have approached the issue this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, so I take it that the mover and second are happy with the way the recommendations are presented, the amended recommendations are presented at the moment?
The I through to C, yes, Chair.
A, B and C, um, we, obviously that's moved and seconded, um, there being no further discussion? Oh, yes, councillor Madden.
I just, um, as an observer, I just wanted to, uh, share an observation this morning. Um, this morning's discussion was very metaphysical in nature. Um, I wanted to thank the general manager for planning, for his reflections. Um, it made me think of another great thinker, Descartes, who is famous for saying, "I think, therefore I am." Um, on this matter, I think it is a much more simple, simple thing than going to foundational philosophy. Um, you either build it and there is no problem at this intersection in the future, or we do not build it and that will remain to be a problem for the residents of Red Bank Plains.
Yeah, that's, I have a similar feeling. Um, I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour. Against, that's, uh, councillor Cullen, your vote in relation to that matter?
Uh, affirmative, mate, affirmative.
Affirmative, that is, uh, unanimous. Um, uh, now item three, infrastructure, oh, sorry, is the, uh, sorry, we actually have uh, the minutes of the last meeting. Confirmation of the minutes, do I have a mover to confirm councillor Madden, uh, seconder? I'll mo- I'll second that motion, all those in favour? Against, that's carried, if there was no business arising, hopefully. Item four, provisional projects approval, um, that's yours, I believe, Mr Anderson.
Uh, thank you, Chair, through you. Uh, this is a report seeking council consideration of and funding for provisional projects, um, which include the installation of an electronic solar powered speed awareness sign in Summit Drive at Springfield Lakes at the cost of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, and this project has been suggested by the Division Two councillors for assessment against the capital investment in provisional projects policy.
Noting the absence of, uh, one of Division Two councillors today, I'll, I'll, um, pass to you, councillor Tully. Do you have any questions?
I have no questions, I'll, uh, await the opportunity to move the motion.
Is there any, um, questions around the table? Uh, if there being no questions, I put the recommendation, um, mover, councillor Tully would like to move, I'll second the recommendation, uh, in, is there any discussion, councillor Tully?
Yeah, just very briefly, um, Chair, um, th- this is probably an interim step um, in relation to improving the, uh, safety on, uh, Summit Drive. There was a serious accident there, uh, earlier this year, and there've been, um, other accidents as well. Councillor Johnic and myself are looking at other opportunities in relation to signage, speed limit, which is fifty kilometres hour per hour, which is normal in, uh, uh, built up areas. Uh, speed bumps have been one request, but they have their downsides as well. Um, line marking is another, and I believe from recent discussion that Google Maps might be taking, uh, people wrongly, um, through, uh, Summit Drive, um, yeah, rather than, um, staying on the principal road network, uh, through Springfield Lake. So I'm certainly supportive of this, I think this is a start, um, but we need to, uh, look at this issue. The, uh, topography there is, um, you know, near the Springfield Lake State School is, uh, downhill. It, it is, um, has its own challenges to, um, try to make it a much safer road, but, um, this is a, a small step to, to ensure that the safety continues to be improved.
Any further discussion? Mayor Harding?
If I may, Chair, yes, I've had discussions with Division Two councils and also, um, met with, um, the local member there, Minister, uh, Ch- Charis Mullin back in May, um, to discuss this particular matter after residents emailed me about, um, the, the concerns along the, spreading along there, as well as divisional councillors, um, raising it. Uh, we worked with the asset and infrastructure team to look at various different things. It's obviously right next to a school, it's on an incline, curves around, um, so it's, the, the road's not that, that wide either. So, you know, everyone's been sort of trying to find a, a better way. So I would, I would support an installation of this speed awareness sign. Uh, it would create a visual awareness for people as they're going around there to be aware of their, their speed and catch the attention, and, and hopefully that'll also alter the driving behaviour. It also allows us to record information there as well, so hopefully that will also allow us, we make decisions in the future of what we can do to make that area, um, you know, so, um, safer as well. So, uh, yes, strongly be supporting that as well, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, there, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, uh, I put the recommendation, all those in favour? Against, that is carried. Uh, oh, sorry, councillor Cullen? Yes, hand up, that is unanimous, thank you. Uh, item five, cable theft across the local government area. Quite a significant issue of concern by the community and this council.
Yes, Chair, uh, and thank you, this report has been submitted to the committee, uh, at the request of councillor Madden. Uh, the report outlines the efforts taken by council employees to ma- to minimise the theft of copper cable, uh, and also indicates the scale of the challenge being faced by local governments and other entities across the state. The recommended, recommendation is that council note the efforts being taken by employees to minimise the theft of copper cable.
Any questions of the officers? I think the work that's being undertaken, and this is, um, obviously clearly a significant issue of concern, particularly, um, for sporting venues, um, that, um, and this theft is so brazen, it can be done in the middle of, sometimes during the day, sometimes during the night, and, um, and the measures that we need to put in place to try and, um, uh, make this difficult or impossible are either costly or, um, quite time consuming. And of course, the cost, uh, of replacing copper cable, uh, and even using the new cable, aluminium cable, is, um, is quite costly on council. Um, yes, question or? I might, uh, move the motion first, actually, I should have moved the motion before making that statement. Uh, my apologies, uh, all those in favour with the motion, which is, I believe, to receive a note?
So can we, do we move and second it, so then we can have a discussion, Chair?
Yes, that's what I was going to do. Uh, the recommendation to, uh, recognise the efforts of council employees to minimi- minimise the theft of copper cable, um, moved by councillor Madden, seconded by councillor Tully. Thank you, um, you wish to say something, councillor Madden, as the mover?
I just wanted to say a few words about this general problem, it's not just a council problem. I'm aware that Somerset Council have had issues with their sporting facilities, with brazen theft of, of copper wire, but also, um, in communities like Pine Mountain, uh, MBN cables are being stolen, it's, it's a huge issue. And, uh, as, as the Chair says, um, they're brazen, turn up in the middle of the day, wearing flurros, looking like they're working, you know? It's not, it's not necessarily something happens in the middle of the night. Um, so I think it's something we really need to look at, um, obviously CCTV for our sporting facilities, but that's not practical with every, uh, MBN pit across Ipswich, so. Uh, aluminium is obviously a possibility, uh, but of course to replace all of the copper wire for Telstra, you know, MBN, um, sporting facilities, um, across all of Ipswich would be, I won't say it's cost prohibitive, but it'd be a very expensive exercise. But I'm very pleased with the report, I thank the council officers for, for following this up, and I'm very pleased to hear, or more pleased to hear, but I'm, I'm glad to see that, um, council offices considers, considers what's being done with neighbouring councils. Thanks, Chair.
Any further discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding.
If I may, Chair, um, we do know that copper theft is on the rise, we've, energy providers reported that thefts between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two have nearly tripled. Uh, for council, the most common targets include our sporting fields, um, switchboard mains, parks, pathway, lighting and, and streetlights. Um, the cost to council has been, um, three quarters of a million dollars since twenty twenty, and most of that has been recovered under insurance, but it's not just the cost, it's the safety issue to our community as well. Um, it's also having direct impact on our residents, so they, they can't train at the sporting fields, uh, people are not being able to go for a jog or a walk at night along the footpaths. Um, so it's good that council's putting a number of, um, strategies in place. Um, I saw this here media release and did some media articles on Channel Seven News on the eighteenth of June this year, just highlighting, um, the impact of the copper theft here, and Whitefield Football Club and a few others also came forward to talk about the impact to their members as well of this. So, um, what I'd like to see happen is for the legislative framework to be strengthened, to take away the ability for the black market to flourish for copper. I know the state government is, is working on that. Um, at the moment, thieves, I think Queensland's the only state where thieves can, um, cash in, um, this, this metal without any ID to be required or given, so if we can make it more challenging for them, that maybe, maybe it will deter them. So, um, I know that the Parliamentary Transport and Resources Committee has recommended that Queensland Government strength, strengthen the legislative framework, and also, uh, strengthen the police and criminal court powers as well, so let's hope that happens sooner rather than later. Thank you, Chair. Oh, sorry, one more thing, I just also noticed in the latest Morton border news, uh, there's also a report in here, um, and I'll quote here, that the Telstra reporting that there were metal and copper cabling, um, taken from their pits in, in Rosewood as well. So it's not just council, as, as councillor Madden said, that's impacting.
Yeah, recognise, uh, what you just said there, Mayor, um, having met with, um, I, I think there were a few councillors who met with or attended a meeting with, um, uh, local, uh, senior police in relation to this very matter, and, uh, numerous ideas were floated, but it does appear as though, uh, the major concern is not so much the licensed operators, it's the unlicensed operators that are the, um, main concern with respect to, um, um, copper and the like, so, um, and of course, the impost on the public, as you say, is, is exacerbated by the fact that we have to wait, uh, for insurance claims to, uh, be processed before we can reinstate these, um, reinstate the copper. So as a result, um, as you said, Mayor, uh, sporting clubs, communities can't use their, um, local facilities at, um, at night. So, uh, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, uh, I'll put the motion, all those in favour? Against, uh, it is all in favour thus far, councillor Cullen, your vote?
In favour, mate, sorry.
In favour, that's unanimous, thank you, councillor Cullen.
Chair, before we start the next one, it's after ten o'clock, may I suggest a thirty minute adjournment?
Ah, yes, I'd like to move a, um, fifteen minute, um.
I, I'm, I was moving a thirty minute.
Thirty minute? Um, would anyone like to, um?
I'll second.
You second? Thirty minute, uh, a bit much for a short, short adjournment?
I've got some phone calls, I can, yes.
All right, well, I'll, um, move a thirty minute, um. Sorry? Oh, sorry, the, the mayor has moved, seconded by councillor Madden, um. Uh, all those in favour? Against, carried.
Back at, um.
Ten thirty seven.
Ten thirty five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harrison.
Harrison. Thank you. All good. Welcome back to the Asset and Infrastructure Services, sorry, Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee. We are now at item six. We do have a quorum present. Just checking your present there, councillor Cullen.
Yes, mate, yep.
All good. Okay, so we do have a quorum, so we'll continue. So, item six, Asset and Infrastructure Services Department cap delivery report for the month of June. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This is a report concerning the performance of the capital delivery by the Asset and Infrastructure Service Department for the month of June 2024, and in effect is the end of financial year report for 2023/24. The recommendation is that the report on capital delivery by the Asset and Infrastructure Service Department be received and the contents noted.
Very good. Is there any questions of the General Manager? Yes.
May I, Chair, through yourself? Mr Anderson, I'm looking at page sixty-five, which is the list of the projects where council has successfully and unsuccessfully applied for grants. Looking at the Perga School Road, Perga, there was one there, it's been crossed off. So do we have a grant or we're not doing it? There's the Perga School Road, Perga, the Heavy Vehicle Safety and Productivity Programme.
Mayor, through you, Chair. I'll have to take that on notice. I don't have the team in the crowd, as I see, to enter that one for me.
No worries.
Through the Chair, agreed with Mr Anderson that the far right column does say unsuccessful, heavy vehicle safety and productivity programme, but we can certainly confirm that.
Thank you, Chair. You see ya.
You may wish to raise that at the council meeting, Mayor. Is there any further questions? Yes, councillor Madden.
Just a couple of questions. Through you, Chair. The first item is West Mac Signals at Woolcracker. I'm just wondering if that end column that says required completion date agreement date end, it currently says the thirtieth of June two thousand and twenty-four. I'm just wondering, Mad, if that should be amended, given that it hasn't started yet?
Yes, that will need to be amended. Thank you, councillor.
And just the next item is that, could you give us a bit of information about the Carrowley Alternate Access Track? It's just something I'm not familiar with.
Yes, councillor, this is, the Carrowley Alternate Access Track is a study that's currently underway with the intent to provide Carrowley residents the opportunity to evacuate in the event of flooding.
Familiar with that now? Yeah, very good. Okay. Yes. If there's no further questions, the recommendation is a simple one that it be received and noted. I'll move that recommendation to have a second time, councillor Madden. Any discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding.
If I may, Chair, back to page sixty-five. We're talking about the BMX Clubhouse at Wally Park, which we officially opened on the working chair. I note that it has the five hundred thousand from the state, but the total cost estimate is incorrect. It was two point one million, not one point four nine six. So I'll just highlight that. I have a few questions. Let me just get to my notes. Mr Anderson, I'm just looking on page seventy-eight, and we've got the Red Bank Plains Road Stage Three RU seventeen. We got a lot of queries from residents about when this particular stage will be finished. I know we say at the end of this calendar year. Can I just check on with you, just with this wet weather and so on? How is that tracking?
Through you, Chair. The project is currently performing to its rebase lined milestone. So we are intending to complete, even in spite of the wet weather, as predicted by the end of the year.
So the end of the calendar year, okay. If I go to the next page, seventy-nine, which is the upgrades to the Worrel Park Cemetery upgrade. We've had a lot of, especially around Christmas time, talk about the state of that particular cemetery. When I went out there, it's improved a great deal. So can I ask, what did you do with the contractor to sort of get them to fix things up out there?
Mayor, that may actually be a question best posed to Brett Davy, is the GM of PRS.
Thank you.
Good morning, Brett Davy, General Manager, Planning and Regulatory Services. Mayor, in response to your question, through the Chair, the contractor that operates selection of our cemeteries inherently has a desire to provide a cemetery that is to a condition that meets community expectations. Obviously, like us and many others, struggled with the growing season. And there were a range of particular challenges there with a number of our cemeteries, but particularly the Worrel Park's Lawn Cemetery, in that the soils, as many would be familiar with, are quite black. And that means that as soon as it rains, the soil is quite elastic and easily bogs machinery. But ultimately, they did elevate their maintenance regime, included additional staff, and focused on getting that under control. And the reprieve in both heat and wet helped get on top of it.
I also have reports from residents about some of the graves it's sunken in. So did they do any work around that?
Yeah, and that is a constant challenge. So particularly in those soils, what happens there is you've got a combination of the black soil with a high water table because it's so close to the creek. And so this is kind of a compounding situation where the resources taken to actually excavate a grave for burial purposes increases because it's harder to excavate, and there's actually more chance of collapse. And then, of course, the rain with the reactive soils means that they sink quite quickly and for quite a long period of time after burial. So unfortunately, there's a constant balance of topping those graves and then being able to mow them, noting that once they're topped, they could sink further. And so that's just a constant bit of gardening that's required, I suppose. It does make it very difficult to mow if it's not kept on top of. But in saying that, they've also had a peak volume of burials out there, which is a strange term, but it does create another workload challenge.
Mr Davy, just noting the rainy weather and peak times, I think for the cemeteries also around that Christmas New Year when people sort of come back to, you know, travelling around and so on. What's council doing with the contractor there to ensure that they keep on top of the maintenance there?
Yes, we had anticipated, of course, in holiday season, particularly on Christmas, that you do have that peak. And so that happens to coincide with our peak growing season. So we have, you know, constant conversations regarding a standard with the contractors. We had elevated that conversation in the lead up to the last growing season. I suppose the key is continue that conversation through winter into the next growing season to put them in the best position to have that proactive maintenance in the lead up to that, you know, anticipated peak growing season we'll have again.
Thank you, Mr Davy. Thank you, Chair.
So the motion was moved and seconded.
So I have asked Mr Anderson a few more questions?
Yes, go ahead.
In regards to the rainy weather we have at the moment, is it impacting any of our construction activities that we're doing?
Through you, Chair. Yes, Mayor, at this stage, there are some works which have been planned for Sunday at Marion Williams Street, the Ashfelt Construction. At this stage, we're still determining whether or not that will go ahead, depending on the nature of the rain as it falls. There was a number of small concrete pours which had been intended to be completed this week, which now will be delayed. But materially, it will not impact our timelines.
Thank you, Mr Anderson. Thank you, Chair.
Anything further? Any further discussion? There being no further discussion, the motion has been moved and seconded. So I will put the motion. All those in favour? Councillor Cullen, it is all in favour. And I see your hand. Yes, thank you. Councillor Cullen, that is unanimous. Item seven, development application, I believe we now hand over to Mr Davy. Thank you, Mr Anderson. Feel like I'm part of the matrix every time I say that. Mr Anderson. So the item is item seven, development application, recommendation, material change of use, intensive animal husbandry, it's a greyhound breeding, dog breeding and training facility. Now, while you're getting yourself settled there, Mr Davy, is there many questions around the floor in relation, oh, we need to change your, is there any, is there many questions in relation to the matter around the table? Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
I'll just, I'll just wait for Mr. I'll just wait for Mr Davy to be settled. I was just wondering how much, you're good? Good to go. Okay, Mayor Harding, if you'd like to open?
Thank you, Chair, through you, Mr Davy. I note that in this matter, the Queensland Racing Integrity Commission was a third party adviser. And I appreciate that that information that they've provided is on development eye. But could I ask, it becomes an attachment to this as well, so it's sort of easier for residents to review and read? It is relied upon?
Through the, excuse me, through the Chair, attachment to this council report or to the decision?
Oh, to the council report, I think.
Yeah, of course, and we can make that adjustment before the ordinary.
If that's okay.
Any further questions? Any other questions around the table? Yeah, look, my great concern in relation to this is not necessarily in relation to the sport or anything like that. It's specific to the level of breeding. There are a number of, and I'm talking about dog breeding in general, concerns in relation to intensive dog breeding. So I guess my great concern or my question is, who is the authority that would be monitoring this particular facility and the breeding practices?
Chair, that would be the Office of Liquor and Gaming, hence the request for their third party review, noting that we've had a couple of these proposals and will continue to get more. And on the back of the greyhound facility, the state government facility being constructed, we were acutely aware that there would be community concern about these facilities. The majority of that concern, which actually has been validated through the assessment of submissions, is about animal welfare, including the principles of keeping the breeding and the industry itself. So it is my understanding that the Office of Liquor and Gaming are the regulator from that perspective. So they keep a close eye on these facilities from that perspective.
I did have a, can't seem to find it at the moment, but I did have a report here or an email from one of your officers. My understanding, and please advise, the reason it's before this committee is the level of submissions, is that correct?
Yes, correct. The volume or number of submissions triggered referral to the committee. So if, for example, this proposal had less than twenty submissions, then it would be decided under officer delegation.
Now, I understand that the, and it's quite interesting reading through, the level of submissions was quite significantly high. Was it some seven thousand submissions? And yet, the reality is that from local residents, there was probably less than a hundred, is that correct?
Correct. The vast majority of submissions were from across the country, if not some internationally. Obviously, the topical animal welfare issue is something to be mindful of. But on the whole, I think the local community views, there were very few shared.
And was there any from any neighbouring residents or the like?
I believe so, but if you would like to discuss more specifics, I could get Greg Potter to come and explain some more about the submissions.
Does anyone have any specific questions of Greg Potter in relation to that? If not, I don't see any further need. Okay. So the recommendations are nominated there in the report that council approve the application being a material change of use for intensive animal husbandry, subject to the conditions as contained in Attachment One. Do we have a mover? Moved councillor Madden, second up? Is there a seconder around the table? Yes, councillor Tully. Any discussion? Mayor Harding?
Oh, you moved it.
Oh, sorry, councillor Madden.
It was just a very minor question. The attachment is quite big. Is there a restriction on the number of pups at Hembry there at any one time?
Through the Chair, there is a limitation on the number of dogs. There is a threshold when pups are considered dogs. But if you would like clarification on that, we could get Greg Potter to clarify.
Then I would like Greg Potter.
You'd like?
I'd like Greg Potter.
Mr Potter? Thank you, Mr Potter.
Greg Potter, Manager Development Planning.
The question, you heard the question?
I have. I just wanted to reiterate something as well. The Queensland Racing and Integrity Commission have the authority to visit the site at any time if there's concerns around animal welfare or the general nature of the operation in terms of the kennels and training areas. So in this particular example, through the Chair, councillor Madden, you would see in the report, the maximum number of dogs at any one time on that site is a hundred and twenty five. Yeah, no more than that. So I guess to be clear, you know, other dogs can't be using that facility. So they need to be kennelled on site. There's also, we've placed some restrictions in the conditions about the number of dogs that, for example, are able to be outside. So at any one time, there's forty, because I know that we're talking about submissions from perhaps local neighbouring properties around noise mitigation issues like that. So, but probably just to point out that, and in some of the issues that were raised earlier about from the animal welfare submissions around over breeding, treatment of greyhound dogs and those types of things, the Queensland Racing and Integrity Commission have the authority to manage that. And they did respond. In terms of the report, all of those issues that were raised by the animal welfare groups were addressed comprehensively. We obtained third party advice from that organisation and they addressed those.
Greg, could you clarify that issue about when a pup becomes a dog?
That's a very good question. I'll probably have to take that one on notice.
I can understand why, when a pup's born, it's not classified as a dog. But if you just clarify at what point it becomes a dog, and take it on notice, that's fine.
That's okay. What I would say, councillor Madden, correct, I mean, I'm not an expert in that area, but there is, outside of the kennels, you would have seen on the plans, there are whelping areas for mothers and pups, so they're sort of separate. Obviously, they're not, doesn't warrant having a kennel. So at what particular age or time, I'm not sure.
I've just located in the report that up to a hundred and twenty five greyhounds includes pups.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, then I don't need that.
No, that's okay. Yeah, that's inclusive. Yeah, sorry, pups and mothers, yeah.
That was my only query, Chair.
Thank you. While Mr Potter is here, do you have questions, Mayor Harding?
Was that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr Potter, thank you. So obviously, you assess this or your team assess this?
Correct.
I noticed that there were, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, twelve main concerns. I just want to touch on some of those. The first one was animal welfare, and I noted in the report, it talks about that council's assessment and comment on animal welfare is limited as these matters, while important are not assessable under the Queensland Planning Frameworks. It's under the Greyhound Australasials. So what part can we do and what part is not council's?
Well, I guess, thank you, through the Chair, Mayor, it doesn't form part of the Queensland Planning Frameworks. So it's not part of our, when we're assessing a development application such as this one. Hence why, when we received the submissions, there were a significant number of submissions around animal welfare. So we can request third party advice, which is what the council officers did in this case from the Queensland Racing and Integrity Commission. And so, as I was saying earlier, they addressed all of those particular points that were made in those submissions. And as a result of that, in terms of the assessment of the application in its entirety, we were satisfied with that response. Becomes an issue outside of planning, moving forward, probably something to note, that there will still be, for example, environmental health and local laws officers will need to, you know, issue licences in relation to commercial kennel and breeding facilities. So it's not, there's the planning aspect and then moving forward in terms of how they're treated.
From a legal perspective, are you, are council officers, under the Planning Act, are they able to take animal welfare into consideration in assessment?
Only when they've received third party advice, they can, yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah.
The next one was, I was going to talk about ecological impacts. I noted in there that they talk about koala exclusion fencing. And just with the Environment Protection Biodiversity Conservation Act boundaries, that the exercise yard one is going to be a bit smaller because of the koalas. And I just look at what's the impact to the dogs?
Sure. So first and foremost, there was an ecological assessment submitted as part of the application, which acknowledges that needs to be a fifty metre setback from where those housing and training facilities are for the greyhound dogs to the core koala habitat area. And that's what's being conditioned as part of the approval, to ensure that there is that separation. And the koala fencing that is to be implemented or constructed is a state requirement, a guideline around that type of fencing. And it's utilised in a lot of these cases.
How much is exercise yard one being reduced? I'm just thinking of the dogs here as well.
Oh, no, it's not more about being reduced, it's really, it's just making sure that it's located. There's that setback, fifty metre setback, yes.
I was quoting, according to the plans, had been marked up to reduce the size of exercise yard one to ensure compliance.
I might have to just seek some guidance around the actual size of that.
That's on page ninety three.
That would be a third party advice as to whether or not that would not be adequate, I would imagine, wouldn't it?
Well, that's right. I mean, look, whilst I don't have that in front of me, the, again, the Queensland Racing and Integrity Commission approve, well, have the authority to inspect the premises, assuming that in this case, that they would comply with those requirements and can at any time have a look at that to see whether that's appropriate and complies.
May I ask for a question on notice, just to come back on that, so how much that yard was reduced?
Reduced by, sure.
The next matter that was raised by residents was noise management.
Yes.
I do want to say that greyhounds are usually not prone to barking, but in kennels they are more likely, especially around feeding time. I guess I'm looking from a koala's perspective. I know there's the fifty metres, as well as residents. I note on page ninety seven, there's the overall specific outcomes, talking about the intensive animal husbandry code. It says the assessment manager reviewed three versions of a noise impact assessment submitted in support of the proposed use and owing to numerous uncertainties, ambiguities, inconsistencies, concerns regarding the quality of the technical reporting within all reports submitted, a third party peer review was sought, and obviously you've got a fourth assessment. It talks about later on, in response to the admissions of lack of transparency in the fourth noise impact assessment dated the second of May, to ascertain whether conditional approval could be considered part of the project. So I guess I'm asking you, do you still have concerns about the noise impact assessment? What are they and how can we address them? Because I think that's a really big matter for our residents.
Yeah, correct. Look, it's through the Chair, Mayor. If you look at where, first of all, we're talking about a fairly large rural parcel, landholding. The facilities are located very centrally, so that's twenty two hectares of land. In fact, the training facilities and the housing facilities occupy about five percent of the land, it's about eleven thousand square metres. So being centrally located, there's been an effort to make sure that any noise generated by greyhounds is reduced. I note that the Queensland Racing and Integrity Commission did also confirm that, that greyhounds are typically not a breed of dog that barks a lot or loudly. There has been, there's also a one point eight metre high fence around the bullring, around the kennels to, and rather than from an acoustic perspective, the premise that underpins that is that dogs, whether they be greyhounds or another breed, can easily be distracted by moving vehicles or people. So it's to screen them from seeing those sorts of activities and be set off. There's also a restriction in terms of the hours, so there's two points there. The first one being that in terms of that training between the hours of seven AM and six PM, so to limit any possibility of noise at night, as well as the limitations on, and these have been conditioned, the number of greyhounds that will be outside and utilizing the training facilities to forty.
Please correct me, but it was my impression from reading about the noise impact and some statements here saying, although the fourth submitted noise impact assessment remains unclear as to exactly how the noise prediction model was configured. I just, is this, I've never seen this before, we've had four assessments. It still doesn't seem to have hit the mark, especially when it's a major concern from residents.
Yeah, sure. I might have to call on one of the officers. However, my understanding is that there were concerns around dogs barking and decapels, how loud that might be and intervals for times of periods of time. So whether that be for fifteen minutes. The, in terms of the assessment though, overall, the conditions that have been imposed, you know, the officers are satisfied that that deals with any noise issues in terms of adjoining properties, in terms of rural residential amenity, as well as other concerns.
Through the Chair, Mayor, I'd also offer the observation that we wouldn't be putting a recommendation before the council if we weren't satisfied that all the material had addressed our concerns or we were able to impose conditions to address those concerns. So when it comes to technical reports like this, it's honestly not unusual for there to be multiple iterations of a report. And unfortunately, it's not unusual for us to be not satisfied with the final product. The key is whether or not we are satisfied that the proposal can achieve the stated standards. When it comes to noise, there are a couple of considerations. Firstly, it's location. Secondly, it's then design, so that's where different parts of the function are. And then where the, you know, acoustic barriers and those sorts of mitigations can occur. And then finally, it's operational mitigations. So if we're satisfied that the proposal can meet the acoustic criteria with those mitigations in place, that's when we'd move forward, even if the report isn't perfect. It might be ninety percent of the way there.
I think I appreciate that. And I did note that while there was no acoustic attenuation, it looks like the thermal insulation that's used for the dogs does provide.
Correct.
Obviously, we get questions about property values and under the Planning Act, how do council officers deal with that?
That's right. It's not a consideration under the Planning Act. Take into consideration property values or a person's financial circumstances, so.
So the dust and odour impacts, in particular the waste management plan, were there any adjustments to that or was what was submitted was acceptable?
Yeah. So through the Chair, Mayor, there was a waste management plan submitted with the application that provided detail around particularly the washdown areas around the kennels and being able to filter that through a tank system into the property, as well as obviously disposal of waste, collection, et cetera. And again, that will be also part of the environmental health regulatory position.
There were some concerns about gambling, but again, under the Planning Act?
That's right, yeah. That's an issue that's dealt with under the wagering act. And as Mr Davy pointed out earlier, that's something that's also administered by the Office of Liquor and Gaming.
Do we know, I guess this is precedent for future applications, do we know? I think we've had another application come in for another husbandry, but for a smaller. Do you know how many we're expecting to come here?
There will be a lot, huh?
Through the Chair, in anticipation of this, we actually did meet with the Racing Integrity Team to just understand their role in the process because we understood that once a state facility was being delivered at Ipswichburna Road, there is a likelihood that operators that either are involved in breeding, training or races themselves would seek to locate closer. We've got no idea what that will look like in terms of numbers, but obviously, there will be a range of different sizes of facilities from small scale operators to something that's more commercial like this. The core for us is to focus on the areas that are within our region of control. The core community issues are obviously animal welfare, impacts of gambling and engagement when you look at the summary. Aside from that, when you actually look at the other matters, most of them are actually common matters that are part and parcel of rural activity. So when you end up with any form of intensive animal husbandry, whether it's a feedlot, whether it's just regular practising, whether it's dairy farm or other rural pursuits, you will have issues of managing chemicals, of managing manure generation, all those sorts of things.
Thank you, Mr Davy. I don't have any other questions. And thank you, Chair, for your indulgence. Thank you.
Yeah, I just have a couple. Just with respect to the fact you've nominated the animals, was there also the option to just approve a facility but licence the number of animals so that we could, if there was an issue somewhere down the line with the number of animals or with the noise or whatever the case may be, we could reduce the numbers? Or is it just as, that's all we've got with respect to the management?
That's what we've proved at the moment. It's probably something that can be dealt with, depending on compliance, so, yeah.
Through the Chair, there are certain limitations in the way that planning approvals can be conditioned under the Plan- Through the chair, there are certain limitations in the way that planning approvals can be conditioned under the Planning Act. So if a proponent has sought an approval for a particular thing, you can't then impose conditions that change that thing. So for example, ever applied for hundred and twenty five, you can't then impose a requirement for sixty. You could work with the applicant through the process to go, there are a range of information issues here that, you know, the noise is such that you need to reduce the size of facility. Now, if there is a, say, there's an animal welfare issue, of course, the Racing Integrity Commissioner through their licensing could go, look, this facility is not suited and the size can be reduced.
But what about noise? If we got ongoing noise complaints, is it just breaches that we go with? Or is there a way of reducing their numbers? Or does that have to be by agreement?
To an extent, the conditions say that there are structural issues that need to be incorporated as well as operational. So in the event that, say, the facility is approved as recommended and is constructed and there are ongoing issues where noise is a problem, there's a couple of reliances we've got. So firstly, it's on what's in the conditions and whether or not structurally the things that have been required have been completed in accordance with the conditions and the application material, whether or not there are the the operational suggestions in the reporting are satisfactory and actually being adhered to. Now, if those two things are completed and then there is still an acoustic issue, then of course we either rely on the conditions of the approval or on the Environmental Protection Act with the general amenity provisions to say, well, there are, there's obviously an issue here. What other measures can be in place? There may be a role for the Integrity Commissioner in that as well. If there's ongoing concerns, we can liaise with them. But our compliance activity would need to be our own to an extent.
Very good. Any further discussion?
I don't have any other questions.
No. Was there any further discussion? None from the observers, okay. Very good.
So if I could have discussion, if that's if the questions are stopped.
Yes, yes, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think that in discussing this, we need to note that the there is a state of the art greyhound racing track going there and a facility going there. There was a decision by the state government and it was expected that we'd be getting applications like this. I look forward to the the Queensland Racing Integrity Commission report, that third party advice being part of this, because I think it addresses a lot of the questions from residents. I think there are only, I shouldn't say only, but there were seventeen submissions from locals that weren't part of a pro forma, so they actually sort of contacted us. The rest were the cut and paste emails and so on. So I think it'll address a lot of the concerns from from people as well. So thank you for that, Chair.
I believe the motion has been moved and seconded. So I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? All, that's one, two, three, four in favour. All those against? Yes, including Dave. I've got your vote there, Dave. Thank you, councillor Cullen. And I abstained, myself. So that is carried. Item eight. All good, thanks. Item eight, planning and environment court status report. Any questions in relation to this matter? It is to be received and noted. If there are no questions, I'll move the motion that it be received and noted. Seconder, Mayor Harding. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favour? Just looking to you, councillor Cullen, that is unanimous. Thank you. Item nine. Exercise of delegation report by the manager of development planning. Again, it is receive and note. Is there any questions in relation to the matter? Councillor Cullen? No, no questions. I'll move the motion that it be received and noted. Seconder, councillor Madden. Any discussion? There being no discussion, the matter is moved for the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillor Cullen. I see your hand. That is unanimous. I believe we have the late item, item ten, a notice of motion relating to the Criminal Code Decriminalisation of Sex Work and Other Legislation Amendment Bill twenty twenty four. The matter was initially moved or notice of motion by councillor Tully in relation to this matter.
I'll I'll move the that motion as printed.
And I'll second that motion. Is there any questions? Yes, councillor Tully.
Probably to the GM. I I think it just falls into a simple explanation of some of the issues and there has been a paper circulated to councillors. But primarily with the new legislation, the Criminal Code Decriminalising Sex Work and Other Legislation Amendment Act, when does that commence, first of all, and supersede the existing legislation? The general issue then of what becomes lawful in what zones and in what way that impacts on councils. And I assume the answers here are the same for the seventy seven councils in Queensland. And and to a major extent that I think we need to be aware of is the current prohibited distances of these facilities are either the one hundred metre or two hundred metre rule from schools or churches or places where children gather. Is that recognised in the new legislation in any way? Or could it be incorporated into the new planning regime? Thank you.
So through the chair, thanks for the question, councillor Tully. This this piece of legislation is actually in force. It came through a parliamentary committee in the lead up to May this year and it was agreed to for its commencement or taking effect from the second of August. So this month. This is a large change in the area of regulation for this particular use. So the previous requirements were essentially that any more than two prostitutes involved in a sex work use were considered to be a brothel by definition. So that would then lead to a planning assessment process for that defined use. And there are a series of criteria that constitute a prohibition. And that prohibition is that separation distance referred to. So it was essentially within two hundred metres of a residential area, building or public building and a hundred metres within or within a hundred metres of a residential area. So there were specific limitations which in effect meant that in the general community, you could have a sole operator occurring at certain premises, but when it became a brothel, with the criteria that was in place, you would only really see those popping up in industrial areas. So the change now is that those those are all gone, those criteria, the definition of brothel is also gone and it's been incorporated in as a regular business use, I suppose. So what that means in practice is that the concept of sex work can happen as part of a business or a home based business. And that means that for a home based business, you can't make them impact accessible. So they're either accepted development, so they can occur within criteria, or they're co accessible. And in the other cases where they're a business, they're just treated like a regular business. So if presuming the the building has a use right for a business use and the use complies with operating hours and all those sorts of things, it can just happen. If it chooses to operate outside of those standard hours or outside of the requirements for a home based business, then an application would be triggered. So the challenging bit will be, obviously that changes the criteria of where these activities can occur across the community, reduces the local government control that applies. Essentially, local government controls can only be applied to these uses when we apply them broadly for all business uses across the community essentially. So you can't have specific codes, for example, that that deal with this use in isolation. And then there's a twelve month moratorium after its commencement so that if users are operating, they can't just be shut down. They've got to be given the the chance to seek approvals.
Just just following on from that, with with home uses, how many persons not residing on a residential premises are permitted under our current planning scheme?
I believe it's one additional, so the resident and one additional person. There's also some limitations on hours and number of visitors.
Yes. And signage, I presume if it's a lawful business type use, they could have two A frame signs outside each of these premises?
There'd be some restrictions on temporary signage, but essentially they could do a half a square metre sign on the front fence advertising the business and they could put some temporary signage up as well. Similarly, if, say, there's a shopping centre and there is a vacant premises and they enter into a lease agreement with the owner of that shopping centre, it could be could establish in that shopping centre, there could be signage at the shopping centre. Yeah. So so long as there's a lawful right for either a business or a home based business, it could operate there regardless of its proximity to other uses.
So just to simplify the situation, a brothel is just regarded like any other shop or business premises, a fish and chip shop or an accountant's office or whatever, it's it's the basic starting point is that it's a lawful use under the new legislation?
Correct.
Thank you.
I'll just I'll just open to our observers. Councillor Doyle?
Yeah, thank you. Through you, Chair. Mr Davy, further to councillor Tully's questions. You made a comment regarding a lawful use and operating within the approved hours. And if they should operate outside of those hours, did you say an application would be triggered? What, can I just understand that a bit more, please?
Yes, of course. So in those cases, if there's a lawfully established use in some, you know, very historic uses for historic shopping centres, there may not be set operating hours. But in the event that there are, then there would need to be an application to change the operating hours. If there was an approved shopping centre that had specific conditions on operating hours, again, they would have to seek approval to change those hours or a fresh application for that use. And in the event of a home based business, the same theory would apply, that if they are within the standard operating hours of a home business, they're fine. If they want to operate, say, for example, twenty four seven, in a home based business, that would be co accessible only, not impact accessible.
If I may, just put an example to you and if you could help me understand. There's been more than one example across Ipswich and other LGAs for that matter in relation to, I guess, illegal, what were formerly illegal activities out of a business, a shop front, police were involved and, you know. It was established that, I guess, prostitution was occurring rather than simple massage services under this new legislation. Is that, I guess, diminishing options within our community by residents who are upset with a small business that has historical shop hours, eight AM to ten PM? You know, under the existing regime, it seems the only lever we have had is if we gather evidence and intel that they're operating outside of the required hours. That was our own ability to sort of clamp down on them. There could be, very well be prostitution services occurring within those historical hours.
Correct. So I suppose the best distinction is to think of it's a business use to a business use. So we actually, the changes to legislation has removed our ability to make an assessment of the use itself.
Yep.
It's limited to the hours.
Yes.
And I suppose the, in any event, regardless of what the use is, if someone proposes a use in a centre to operate outside of the standard hours, in most cases, that will trigger some form of application. And either there'll be a change to approval or an extension of hours. And in almost all cases, if they were seeking, say, a twenty four hour operation of any business use, the most suburban shopping centres and other locations would trigger impact assessment for a business use to operate twenty four hours. There'd be some exceptions. In the only place there would be an occurrence of a twenty four hour operation without impact assessment may be in Ipswich Central here, where you've got the most intensive commercial part of the entire city.
So if I could ask, so one of these things could set up much the same way as a twenty four seven gym?
Correct. So I I think if you forget the activity that is associated with it, it's anywhere that a business could operate, potentially this could occur there. And the ability for us, I suppose, to regulate that location through land use decisions as governed by the Planning Act has been removed.
And thank you through you, Chair. So further to that, I I I see that councils' compliance activity will increase significantly. It it's already, I already get a lot of complaints from residents around this type of activity. And if this legislation is then removing the the use lever we would have and the only way we can get pin them is if they're operating outside of hours, that's that's compliance action, that's surveillance, is that not, by council officers?
Yes. So I suppose the focus of that compliance would in most cases be about the operating hours of business.
Yeah.
And that's that's a relatively easy compliance lever to consider. Obviously, there's a potential that the community will have a view on whether or not that use could operate in that location. We can't consider that and the social considerations there. All we consider is, yep, it's it's either within hours or it's outside of hours. And if, say, for example, we get a complaint and we find that they are operating outside of hours, we use our regular compliance levers to essentially issue a show cause notice to ask them to reconsider or to lodge a request. And some might choose to comply and just go, yep, we're going to be eight to five, seven days a week, which is, you know, say, standard operating hours for a given centre and that that's the end of it. Others might go, well, we want to operate twenty four hours, so we'll put an application in to convert to twenty four hours, depending on the location of that particular centre. Some of that might be code accessible, some of that might be impact accessible, but I'd I'd be urging on some of them at least being code. But that's where resident concerns will obviously come in if it's impact accessible and it's twenty four hour operation. But in theory, we've got to we've got to consider these uses just like a twenty four hour gym or, you know, any other twenty four hour use.
Thank you.
Councillor Madden?
Through you, Chair. I hope I don't sound naive when I ask this question. But I do notice when I drive to Brisbane, very occasionally, I do see the massage sign. Is that a euphemism for a brothel now? Some instances, I believe it could be.
There are there are certain examples where that has been a cover for other activities and we've had specific compliance action on some of them. I suppose practically speaking, these changes do blur those lines a little bit more. But again, the focus needs to be on the fact that there is a business happening there. Whether or not they produce widgets, do massage or do other things is irrelevant. What's relevant is whether or not it's got a use right for a commercial purpose and whether it complies with the the regulatory regime. I should also point out that the legislation not only has removed some of those restrictions that existed in the past, but the regulations put limitations on what local government can do to regulate these. So it's essentially taken it out of our basket and put it more soundly in. It's it's an open activity that happens in businesses. And we can't implement other legislation changes, local laws or planning scheme changes to just target this sector.
Just following on, that being the case, you could really have anything on your sign. You could have happy place. There's no requirement for the sign to identify what the activity is?
This is a a challenging issue which has come up from time to time in terms of the content of signs. So whether or not they might meet what people would define as community standards or signage is offensive through wording or imagery. That again is something that we don't necessarily control through the planning system. You could, by reading of the changes, include requirements on sign. You could, by reading of the changes, include requirements on signage. But the content, sign face content is particularly challenging to deal with. And maybe that's something we flag with the local law, the broader local law review we're considering moving forward.
Thanks for that. And then just one final thing, Chair. Through you, Chair, I'd just like to thank councillor Tully for including this in the agenda. It's obviously something of great significance, it's a major change in our society. And it means we have to have laws that could accommodate this major change that we're all going to see happen in front of us.
Councillor Tully?
Yeah, thank you. Just a follow-up question. You mentioned residential areas, that you could have one additional person as opposed to a resident working there and it's lawful. You mentioned the hours of operation in a residential area that would be code accessible if they wanted to go 24 hours a day. Being code accessible, the public wouldn't have a formal right to object to a planning application, DA, is that correct?
Correct. So they they would have a right to make a submission, of course, but all those submissions would be not properly made submissions and they wouldn't afford appeal rights to the community in the event of a decision.
Hmm, that's concerning.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, my question, that was all, that's all. Yeah, so just to clarify, with respect to residential areas and home-based businesses, if I can use that term, they can only go, they can only be two operators, is that correct? Now, as opposed to one, as it was before?
Uh, so we've got current provisions about home-based businesses and as a summary, can't profess to have been perfect, but as a summary, it's the the resident and one other, up to 10 visits a day and then some restrictions on operating hours. The draft planning scheme has a similar suite of provisions. So that that would be the applicable code. Now, where it's different is prior to August, if you had two operators or more, you'd be considered a brothel. You'd then trigger a planning application and you'd trigger all those separation requirements we discussed earlier.
It would be impact accessible.
And it would be impact accessible. And it will also be prohibited in certain locations. So now that's gone. And so, in essence, whatever regulation we apply to these and other business uses need to be consistent. So if we say a home-based business should be four people engaged in a home-based business, well, that will apply to this. If we say one and one, as in one resident and one additional person, that will apply to this, just like any other business.
Any questions in relation to that? It's deeply concerning, that's for certain. So, okay, yes, Mayor Harding?
Um, I guess in in, look at this, Mr Davy, that this is a big change and obviously it's been brought in by the Queensland Government and they have a very rigorous process for bringing in regulation and so on. But I haven't really seen anything in this in the mainstream media. So do you know how the Queensland Government's going to communicate this decision with the community, with Queenslanders? Otherwise, I'll just think it's council's fault.
Uh, Mayor, I can't profess to understand the engagement process the state will go about, but they've they've certainly published updates on this on their website. They've sent out notification through their their regular, I think it's Subscriber Network for Legislation Change. There's documentation on their public-facing website, including guidance for local governments. There's actually a relatively useful frequently asked questions page as well, which I can, of course, circulate to yourself and the councillors. But that that addresses some of these issues we're discussing today. But I'm not aware of any other broader campaign or education.
Sex workers are primarily women. And in the past, certainly for thousands of years, have been women who have been exploited. Are the Queensland Government putting in additional measures or support for sex workers, noting some of the risks in that work?
I, to the Chair, I can't profess to know the ins and outs of all of those other elements. I focused on the way it impacts the planning system, but I am aware that there's broader legislation change and consideration. This is not just a one-off. There are a series of advancements in the criminal code surrounding this activity. But that will be something to probably seek some advice from the state government on.
Thank you. If I may just add some more of a discussion, I note that in our, you know, the last four years I've been in, we get significant pushback from residents if there's a childcare centre set up in a residential that we had at Carole, just opposite a school, just a couple of hundred metres from my home, the alcohol and other drug rehabilitation centre right next to, you know, very close to to Brothers as well. Significant pushback from our community. So I would expect when this happens, we'll get significant pushback from from the community. And I guess most professions also have some type of professional group, whether you're an engineer or, you know, or whatever, you know, there's so many administrators, there's professional groups. So I guess noting that most sex workers are women and they are, and this, like I said, this this is normally work that women are often exploited. And I guess I'm just really, I'm very keen to see what support mechanisms there are for for sex workers. And I guess they'll be joining the chambers of commerce and join, there'll be, there'll be businesses. So like any other home-based business as well. So, yeah, I think it would be one to watch. And I just think it's really important for residents to to let us know. You know, as council, we have to operate within the law, but very keen to see a bit more about this. And thank you very much, councillor Tully, for bringing it here. And thank you too, Chair.
Yeah, just in relation to, and again, a clarification, if I may, through you, Mr Davy. Home-based businesses, they can pretty much just set up without any notification to council. It's almost self-regulatory, is it not?
Correct. The the terminology currently would be self-assessable and in the draft planning scheme, accepted development, which means it can occur as long as it's within those parameters. The exception would be if someone was an industry, say, a boilermaker, for example. They can't just set up in residential areas.
Um, and I guess, sorry, just to reinforce what you just said before, Mayor, that whilst those other operations needed formal council approval, these things can occur in our neighbourhood without us knowing.
So I guess it's a bit like if I can, if you're setting up a hairdressing salon from your
Yes.
from your front, yeah, front room or something like that?
Yeah, it's it's probably a good example, Mayor, that those those small home businesses, they're treated all equally now. And I suppose it's not like this is a new activity for the community generally. It's not unique to our local government area. Sole operators have always been able to operate anywhere. So that's probably the distinction here, that this activity is happening in the community already. I would hazard a guess that there are more brothels than we would be aware of in our community now because they would be subject to impact assessment. And you imagine some of the resistance, but there would be absolutely unlawful brothels located in our local government boundaries. I don't think we've even had a single application, to be honest, since the provisions came in. So, yeah.
So just to clarify, home-based business doesn't need to register with council? Can have another person apart from the residents there, up to 10 visits per day? And what were the hours again?
I'd have to refer back to the Home-Based Activity Guideline, but essentially it's standard business hours excluding public holidays and it might exclude some days. Yeah, roughly nine to five.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? Now, I understand we have a motion in front of us, which has been moved, but
Yeah, I think I preempted it.
I would suggest that there's going to be some changes. Is that correct?
Oh, no, I haven't got the proposal for, at this stage, we've got the council meeting, but this is just to get it on the agenda.
Okay. Oh, so you may have something prepared for the council?
Yes, depending upon the discussion, not the the discussion, when we're actually considering this motion.
Hmm, hmm. Okay, so the motion is as worded. And the mover stands by the motion, and the second was, was you, was it? Who was the second? I can't remember.
Chair.
That was me, it was me. Okay, very good, there you go. Well, the motion, I will put the motion, all those.
I want to speak.
Oh, sorry, discussion.
Thank.
I'll come back, I'll come back to you, councillor, it'll all start with the mover?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Davy. That's pretty revealing for the 77 councils in Queensland, this legislation. And it seems to me that there are some issues principally in relation to the distance requirements. If there's no move by the state government to reintroduce those 100 and 200-metre-old rules or distances for existing or under the previous legislation from a brothel. That will create a lot of concerns in communities whereby you could have a lawful brothel next to a church or a school or a place where children gather. This will affect, yeah, many places in Queensland and the communities will, I think, be extremely concerned about that. The other issue you raise is residential areas in particular and hours of operation. There are technicalities which operators could use, like one occupier and one extra person who doesn't live there can set up lawfully, subject to the hours of operation. And you have raised the issue that if they make a, an application to extend the hours of operation, that is not subject to any formal objection rights or submission rights or appeals to the Planning and Environment Court. This, I think, is really important, that the communities can have a lawful say and can lawfully have the ability to appear before the Planning and Environment Court. Otherwise, councils around Queensland are making a decision. Sure, anyone can put in a, an informal or a non-properly made submission. But at the end of the day, the right to put in a formal submission and to see it through to finality through our court system, in my view, is quite paramount. The other issue that you raised, which came up in that discussion, was in relation to advertising. That even though we can have standard advertising requirements, numbers of signs and and so on outside any sort of business premises, it does concern me that, as you say, the actual wording on the signs is not something that a council would normally drill down to. For example, if it's a fish and chip shop, well, a sign that says lunchtime specials is quite different from a brothel having the same signage outside their their premises. I think there are a lot of issues that are going to shake out in the in the next 12 months in relation to this. You you you're sort of, even today, in this short discussion, it's obvious that somewhere in Queensland, there are going to be major community issues that are raised. And this is not talking against the principle of the legislation. It's talking about some of those more sensitive issues, proximity to places like schools and churches, the advertising and the times of use. So I would hope that whatever government is elected at the end of October, that they closely monitor this and that it doesn't drag on if it needs further legislation to ensure that some of these issues are properly addressed, will so be it for the community.
I'll open to observers, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Chair. I too would just like to thank councillor Tully for bringing this motion forward. We've had regular discussions around this issue. It's an ongoing issue, particularly in Division Three, in relation to existing businesses that offer the services of massages. And as I think Mr Davy's pointed out, I don't believe there'll be an influx of new businesses. It's it's existing businesses that will now be doing it lawfully with more than one operator or or resident in the property. So it will be that increased activity by way of vehicles that is certainly going to draw attention to the community, that this is going on even if there is no signage. I just want to note the record. Councillor Tully referred to the principle of the legislation. I'm very conflicted about this one because as a female and and, you know, I've been very vocal in relation to council's position on domestic violence. Violence against women and sexual violence against women is never ever acceptable. And as a society, we must do everything to protect these women. So it's my understanding that's one of the basic principles of this legislation is to, you know, allow more than one worker within the home provides greater level of protection for the women. But that has to be balanced with our community needs and expectations, you know. And we're talking about signage. I know from my residents, one of the examples regularly given to me is the patrons, people attending the business. They will get dressed or changed out of their work clothing into casual clothing on the street before they enter the premises. It is very in-your-face for residents. So I look forward to, yeah, exploring more in relation to our local laws and seeing what happens with this legislation as it comes in place.
Yes, thank you, councillor Doyle. Any other discussion? Yes, Mayor Harding?
May, I I note that when this did come before the Queensland Parliament Committee, which is the, I'm going to see which committee it was, the Housing Big Builder Manufacturing Committee that the LGAQ did put in a submission to to the parliament outlining some of the things we've discussed today about limiting the ability of local governments to make local laws, potential consequential impacts and so on. So I just note that the LGAQ did did put forward some of these these matters. Thank you.
Write a reply, councillor Tully?
Just very briefly, this raises an issue, and I know, well, I read and I assume that it's in the legislation, which I haven't read in detail, that there was previously, it was unlawful for prostitutes to have protection by persons travelling with them if they were doing external work. I believe that's been remedied because that was, a lot of people were breaking the law just to protect themselves. And and what's been said by the mayor and councillor Doyle is perfectly true. I guess it's just a recognition that it's very hard industry to control and there are some protections there, but the, what's been identified today is certainly the basis for careful consideration by the government and by our community.
Understood. So the motion has been moved in second and I put the motion, all those in favour? Against, that's carried. Oh, sorry, councillor Cullen, forgot you were there. Did you have any input? Yes, he's voted in favour.
All, all good, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cullen. That is, there, it's, I believe, do we have any other items? Notices of motion? There are none. Matters arising, there are none. That is the agenda. I note the time, we are some 15 minutes to midday. Did you, your meeting?
Well, there is a 10-minute break, yeah, without, by resolution, but that only leaves five minutes. Can I move that the next meeting adjourned at, we probably don't need much more than about 30 minutes, I would think? Could we resume at 12:15? I'll I'll move that, that we resume, not resume, that the next committee commits at 12:15.
12:15. Seconded, Mayor Harding. All those in favour? Councillor Cullen? Time was 12:15, return. Thank you, all in favour, carried, thank you. Meeting's closed.